Good evening. Wow. Here's my... It's kind of scary. Did you roll over, Richard, since you're there?
Eileen Edwards.
I'm here.
Gladys Cooper.
Here.
Michael Ferguson.
Here.
Richard Hawley.
Here.
Jeanne Lee's here. Patrick Johnson.
Here.
Margaret Bright. Dave Matrina. Kathy Mullinell.
Here.
Rob Petruska.
Here.
Right, thank you. All right, we have some recognition. First of all, I'd like to know if there's a gentleman here with the name Gentry Adilla? Adia? Is Gentry here? From Broadview? No? Okay. I'm not going to talk about it because we're going to bring them to next month's meeting. Okay? Thank you. Taking those, we're talking about next week also. And for the people at the table, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education has made March Board Member Appreciation Room, and this is our gift from the school district. So, thank you very much for that opening. I'm saying big part. And so, relative, yeah, okay. I believe that. As far as recognition is also concerned, I'd like everyone here to look at the camera and say hi to Debbie Warner and to Annie. One of two of the four people that watches every move. I thank you very much for watching. It's actually four, we're after four. All right. The other thing I'd like to recognize while we're sitting at the table is I'd like everyone to wish Superintendent Espero, I don't remember his name there. Good afternoon, Espero, happy birthday. I made your partner. Are you? Excuse me, are you the... Are you Gentry?
Yes.
Gentry, I want to, just before Gentry comes on, get his, his, what's his called? Board. All right. Everybody, do you remember the terrible fire on Stephen Street in Danbury? That was a couple of years ago. And Gentry, the gentleman here, was able to get the kids to an alternative bus stop, because everything was tied up with the fire, was active at that time. Okay? And alerted the drivers so the kids would be able to get to school safely that morning. We would wanted to let you all know how much we appreciate your help. What a standout thing to do. Thank you very, very much. And here is the Gentry Board of Education's certificate of appreciation.
And you know where he took these students to, right? King Street.
And you know what school we went to?
King Street.
Thank you so very much.
Some things we can't change.
Gentry, are your parents here?
Awesome.
Are his parents here?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. He didn't get that way, he clawed himself, I think. I think it's... No, wait, never hear me. Can you offer him now?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, that was our recognition. Thank you. It's time for public participation. Board welcomes public participation and asks the speakers, please limit their comments to three minutes. And we do hold you to three minutes, guys, okay? Speakers may offer objective comments of school operations and programs that concern them. The board will not permit any expression of personal complaints or defamatory comments about the Board of Education personnel and students or against any person connected with the Gentry public spaces. Having said that, this sign-up sheet is always very much here. And the first speaker, his name is Mr. Tom Sallie.
Madam Chairwoman, without objections from the board, I'd like to ask my name be moved to the end to allow the parents and other public participants that are here to speak first.
Not a problem, Mr. Sallie, thank you. Okay, next we have... I can't read your first name, the last name is where?
Wendy.
Wendy?
Yes.
Hi, Wendy, come on.
Hi.
Hi.
I am a parent at Shelter Rock School. And as you know, the recent addition put on to our buildings. We were given five beautiful new classrooms, which are wonderful. At the time, we were grateful because we had 420 students who were first beginning scenes. It later came to our attention that there would be a pocket district day and we would be getting more students from other parts of the city. Once the addition was completed and the Millbridge families, those that would transfer to our school, joined our community, we will once again post beginning scenes. In December of 2013, overview of proposed tenant zone changes was issued. One of the objectives was to ensure that district guidelines for class size are intact. And the guideline for this was consideration needs to be given to distribution of students by grade level to meet all the goals, the main goal of reducing class sizes and overcrowding crowded grades in designated schools. Included in the overview was a 10-year projection of students by grade level. According to this projection, the K to five schools were expected to hit 5,240 more students by 2018, 2019 school year. As of October 15th, October 2015, that number was 5,388, well over the projection for three years later. On January 11th, January 5th, 2011, Dr. Sallie provided the Board of Ed with a status report from the Building Utilization Committee. Included in the update was data provided by Dr. Prada of Simsbury. Dr. Prada stated that elementary enrollment would peak in 2016 at about 5,350 students. Once again, we surpassed that projection as well. And there doesn't seem to be a slowing down in the enrollment of school. What I found very interesting is the projected percentage increase of students by school. Where Shelter Rock had a projected increase of 57.3 percent. The next closest was 120. That would be an increase of about 125 students as of the 2011 data. In the last two years, our enrollment has increased 31 percent, and that's already 127 students. We are more than halfway there, and it's only been one half years. I did not find a district policy on class size, but I did see in the NEA union contract that Article 6 states the following guidelines shall prevail when feasible subject to circumstances which exist regarding facilities, elementary schools. When permanent facilities permit no class group, pre-primary through elementary shall have more than 25 pupils. The average class sizes district-wide, when you remove Shelter Rock Communication, kindergarten has 18, first grade has 20, second grade has 21, third grade has 21, fourth grade has 18, and fifth grade has 19. Nothing over 21. As of yesterday, Shelter Rock has the following class size. Kindergarten, 200 students per class, 100 students. First grade, 22 students, 110. Second grade, 27 students, 81. Third grade, 28 students, 84. Fourth grade, 26 students for 78. Fifth grade, 23 students per 90 students, for a total of 543 students.
Thank you. It's a little bit...
If you give them, I can put it in minutes.
Oh, that'll be great.
Okay.
Friends, send a little paper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Lisa Shaker.
Good evening. I stand before you as a parent of a second-grade student and incoming kindergartner at Shelter Rock School. I am not only a concerned parent, but also a third-grade teacher in another district in Connecticut. I currently have 20 students in my class. I also worked in New York City public schools for 10 years, where I taught classes with the size of 28 to 30 students. The current size of a second-grade class is 26 in the Shelter Rock School. My daughter has attended Shelter Rock since kindergarten, and as educator myself, I have been very pleased with the education she's received thus far. When I moved to Danbury nine years ago, one of the reasons the area attracted my husband and I was the high quality of education that our amazing teachers provided, including the multicultural families and the class size. I know that I speak for all parents, that we were excited that in 2014, Shelter Rock was a con can success school story to school. It was not a surprise to the community, as we witnessed the hard work of our excellent teachers and staff. This award highlighted how our academic progress contributes into the community and our 100% parent participation and attendance during parent-teacher conferences led to that success. With that said, I am extremely concerned with the numbers of the students in our school over the past couple of years. As a parent and educator, these numbers are alarming. I have past experiences working with classes as big as 28 and 30 students, as well as working with a classroom of 20. This is significant, there is a significant difference in the harvest of my students. All too often, the focus goes on those struggling students. All too... I'm sorry. It is difficult to challenge our high-function students and our grade-level students. As we all know, with our Common Core standards, it has brought on many challenges for our students and our teachers. Our students are already trying to close the gap in achieving to meet those standards, and it's extremely difficult to do this with the current numbers. This leads to limits in individual and small group instruction that is vital to target the specific needs of our students. Space limitations make small groups difficult, with numbers as high as 27 per class. It was previously said that the increase in the numbers was a bubble class coming further. Unfortunately, this is not the case. Our numbers continue to increase over the past five years, and our students are not receiving the best education that Danbury can provide. We want to continue to see our school remain a success story, and we truly need your help in order to do that.
Thank you very much.
Hey, I'm Sharon. I'm off the table. I am also Shelter Rock here. And even though we're not all speaking tonight, I would like to ask those that are on the issue of please stand. Thank you. We stand before you tonight not only to inform you of our history and current situation, but also to ask for your help to alleviate our crowning issue. You are the three options we would like...
He's used a microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Here are the three options we would like you to consider. We are asking to add classroom space by installing pods and request that you reallocate teachers from other schools within the district to have lower, that have lower enrollment. While these pods are not long-term solutions, our space shortage and expanding classroom sizes at Shelter Rock are an urgent matter for our students, teachers, and staff. The additional space will provide appropriate room to support educational learning and help promote teaching and much-needed access space in our classrooms. We need to add space and teachers as quickly as possible, not only to serve our current students, but also to serve those who are still flowing in throughout the year. Shelter Rock's enrollment has greatly increased over the past two years. Much of that growth has been from the early grades and from the pocketed district leading to oversized classrooms and strain on our teachers and staff. Shelter Rock has experienced significant growth over the past few years, and it's expected to continue with newly-built apartments on South Street, consisting of approximately 50 units. Another option we would like you to consider is the possibility of redistricting or focusing on school overutilization. This option would handle the growing enrollment issues at Shelter Rock and other early schools in our situation, as well as looking at schools that are underutilized. By redistricting, we would also be re-alancing the various grassroots currently in place to transport students to sister schools and limiting the distance traveled by each student to their designated school. Lastly, another option we would like Board of Ed to explore in an effort to relieve our teachers is to use cushions with the current class sizes. Again, by reallocating teachers from schools underutilized, this option would support the educational learning of our students and help promote teaching in smaller group settings within the classrooms. With the upcoming 2016, 2017 school year fast approaching, the Shelter Rock School community has been considering these various options brought to your attention here tonight. We would like to hear from the Board of Ed on their plans for the upcoming school year. And it is with our hope that the Board of Ed will help provide our students with the learning space and teachers they need and deserve to succeed. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. We have Ellen Adams.
Hi. I'm going to greet and allow my colleagues to add some comments. I'm a teacher at King Street School, and King Street is here today. Would all stand up to share our successes and our years so far. We've brought in poster with some pictures that we'd love to share with you and maybe put through later about some realities that we have had going on at our school this past half-year. We have the benefit and the opportunity to have community members helping us as mentors. Women from the Jewish Women's Club coming in as leaders for our children, which is wonderful. And we've had, you know, readers from the community coming in for the factors of...
And then, may I interrupt you?
Yeah.
Your school, you and your school are actually...
Oh, so should I wait?
Yes, please.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. This is public participation.
You have us really interested now.
Are you ready or is that...
That's the teaser.
I'll be back.
That was really good. We have Dennis Smith.
All right, where was King Street?
Actually, I read that and went, oh, okay. And Devin, you're in wait, too?
No, I am. I'm my own comments. Kevin Haddad. I am a fourth-grade teacher at King Street with Trumedia, also a Danbury resident, and speaking as an individual tonight. Many of you guys know me, I've spoken here often, so I'd like to introduce myself to those of you I haven't met before. Maybe I'll be the regular minister again, seeing how my schedule works. Anyway. My colleagues will tell you about some great successes at my school. I also wanted to highlight an organization in the community that I've had the pleasure of working with, that's the Danbury Grassroots Tennis Association. Just, I had, they communicate so wonderfully with classroom teachers, with students that they work with. And I had one student of mine this year, actually, she heard about the program, and as a fourth grader, she sawed it out herself to apply and get herself accepted. So, I hope the partnership that we have with them now, well, fairly limited, will continue to grow in the future. I also wanted to talk about Sback. And I know you'll probably, you've probably seen in the news Governor Malloy, you know, touting that he's made some changes to it and eliminated some parts, but it is still a broken testing system. And I, it's developmentally inappropriate in many levels, and I won't go on with all of the reasons as to why it is not the best fit for measuring student performance. And I know that there's some legislation pending in regards to giving state local control back to school boards about teacher evaluation. I can't say it's true enough that Sback should never be linked to teacher evaluation in any way, shape, or form. So, something for you to think about when you're working with CAE and working with state legislation. And the last thing I wanted to mention is our middle school magnet schools, which have been wonderfully successful so far. And I know the community supports them. As a member of the community and as someone who sees families excited to get accepted into these schools, I also see the families who are disappointed that they don't get into these schools. And I'd like to urge the board to continue looking at ways to sort of even the playing field and bring more of those great programs into Rogers Park and Broadview as well. And, you know, maybe at some point, we don't need to have a magnet school, we can just have three awesome middle schools in our town. Thank you.
Recognizing now.
Okay. I've been, there's another speaker, two more. While you are facing me, there's been a young man that's been in the background.
And his sister.
And his sister. And they have, they have signs. I can't read the signs because I'm alone, but they have one last sign. Wait, they're country. And I just watched them while Kevin was talking to me, because it's time for them to go. It's been time. And I asked that Dr. Espero will go get them to bring them back, because if you come to the sign, darn, we're going to look at that sign. So, if you maybe come closer, so the blind people up here, you'll... And that would be very nice. Because this is why I do what I do, is because of this. Guys, I need to say, where are the... Hi. Chris, why do you do it, do you miss? Okay, which is what grade? I don't know. Okay, and your first name is, I'm sorry. Okay, this is Maggie, and you are again one more time. Aiden. And the last name is Nick Hollister. And Aiden's sign reads, "We love our Shelter Rock," and his heart says, "See," did you make that sign yourself? Very, yours are very talented. And then he has, "I go Shelter Rock," and that's the image. You can just hold hands, everybody can see all that he put in there. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. And that is why we do what we do. And that's what it's about. All right, next I have Ann, Ann Shear. Out of San Jose. Could you come up and speak?
Is it Amber or Ann?
Mr. Shear. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi. I think it's Amber, what's your name? My father was special. My child attended the school district since he was three years old. And my son is diagnosed with cerebral palsy and seizures. Throughout his elementary school education, I believe whoever worked with him may got some exceeded the expected family and doctor's expectations. And when he got to middle school, we don't think the programs that he's being offered are really cool. I don't know about high school, it's like, it's not the same level. And we need the districts to take a look at what they offer as special needs. And maybe I'm a parent, at least the parents that special needs as well, we have similar concerns. Their kids are aggressive, and they have a weak shift. That's all, I'm beautiful, just to let you know.
Well, it's very nice for you to come, so, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Is there anyone in the first row that would like to speak? Seeing none, anyone in the second row? I see you. Come on up. Please sign in and introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Stacy Smith Brown. I'm a Shelter Rock parent, a third grader, and August, kindergartner, August, that sounds crazy, but the state school starts in August. I was part of the redistricting. We're Millbridge parents, and we're in Shelter Rock now. My son is a struggling student, but he progresses throughout each year and tends to catch up by the end. And it's just very disappointing to come to a new school and become part of a community, and it feels like it's happening again, you know, the overcrowding. My son comes home from school, there's a new kid in my class. There's, you know, a week later, Mom, you have 28 kids, and that's not even hearing me saying anything about the number of students. This is, you know, an eight-year-old who doesn't know how to mince words and is telling me honestly and truthfully how his teacher is reacting to the size of the class, the noise, the different behaviors of students and struggling to keep them together and focused. And he had extra time to take this SBAC test, and he still didn't finish. And he had a practice test that he had brought home and shown me, and it just seems like everything is, he's always playing catch-up. And I can't imagine that, being in a class of 28 kids, there's ever going to be a time where he's not playing catch-up. And I'm just here to support the school and the need for another change, some sort of solution to, you know, help address the needs of the talented and gifted students as well as the struggling students. Thank you.
Thank you. Second row, is there anyone else in the second row that would like to speak? See, I'm only in the third row. Anybody? For it? Did? Mr. Sallie? There is nobody in the back, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Education. Thank you for allowing me the afternoon to speak here, for your diligent service that owes the unhandless job oftentimes. You can see the parents here really love Shelter Rock School, as parents love the Rock School across the city. I know you have a tough job. You're caught in between the wants, the needs, and the available resources. And I see that from the city council side, and I understand that oftentimes, we can butt heads financially, but I think communications are much better than they were in the past. That being said, I know that the dollars are tight at all these levels, and that you have to really be careful of operational costs, those ongoing expenses that should occur from year to year, versus possibly considering one-time capital expenditures, which may be a bit more palatable both to the city and potentially the state if there are any funds for that. Shelter Rock School, as the parents said, is bursting at the seams, and when the city council, parents, teachers, and this board did so much work to push through a bond package, which was great, and did wonderful things, expanded several schools in our city. And we were told at that time, and truly believed, and I know the board did at that time, the members, that this would be a solution for eight, 10, maybe years more. It would be even five years more than that. Barely halfway through, not even close, we're already bursting at the seams. So, the frustration is real at the parents' and the teachers' level. I know that you will have some tough decisions ahead of you, not only this budget, but the long-term solutions to address these problems. It is commendable that the parents have not come and thrown down the gauntlet, but instead have offered options to consider. And I think some parents and teachers may be already speaking with staff, with board members about trying to implement some of these options, which are, I don't want to say absolutely cost-neutral, but as cost-neutral as they can be. And they're being very realistic about this. I know that this board will consider them, and that the parents will stay involved in all these issues. And to the extent that I can in any way assist or participate, I am here to do that. I will attend as many meetings as I can. And I just want to thank the parents for coming here, for speaking on behalf of their children and their school. And go Screaming Eagles.
Okay, I'm, okay. Yes, that's a very good idea. Because there are so many parents here, and because the problems are always about money, we've been here about it all during, you know, we've been, various of me and John and Mr. Jeanne Lee would like to make sure that we're all aware of at, at Broadview Middle School at six o'clock, 6:30 is ours, she should come, and there's a surge in spending. And we've been going to death for it. So, we've all... So we've all tried to make it really nice. And we're learning a lot. Um, as to why you're all here tonight, we thank people for coming and participating. It's just that we don't, um, we don't discuss it here. We'll hear from the ministers and the, the answers. We appreciate you coming on. All righty? Thank you. Okay, moving on, um, to the consent calendar. Richard?
That the Board of Education covered the items on a consent calendar. Exhibits sixteen forty-three through sixteen forty-seven as recommended.
Second. The second of, Mr. Jean-Louis, Professor. Um, before we vote, um, I have some questions I want to thank. I'd like to thank Rosemary Britton, her playing three years of service. Mary Connell, for her eighteen years, and Stephen Bartlett, for his thirty years. Wow, okay, it's amazing what a speaker and what they do. All right. Notions been made and set here. Are there any, is there any discussion? Do you have any other questions that you want to ask? Seeing none on the paper. You pass it to Mr. Sider. Is there a representative here? No, go. No, not King Street's time yet. Okay, that's, sorry.
Okay.
Okay. I don't think I know that anybody that we have all this. Okay, um, no seeing none, huh? Okay. There is King Street, there is King Street. Come on, stand up, everybody. You guys seeing none, are you seeing? Who is speaking? Tell us what's going on. Okay.
You could take Kurt aside, sit right up. Um, we hope again that you'll check out our posters and things that we've been doing at King Street. Again, we have a lot of, um, community participation from our, um, Veterans Day celebration to, uh, Dr. Seuss Day, to our mentors and helpers in the school, which we really appreciate. Um, the school's been involved in many projects this year already. We have a community garden that we're working on. The kids are all participating in. Um, we just had fourth grade wax museum where the children studied and bought a piece of certain, their favorite people or new people that they were learning about and, um, became those people. And we invited parents and they dressed up and told about their lives. It was, you know, quite a fun activity. Um, we just raised over nine thousand? Nine thousand dollars for Young Broke for Hearts. So King Street is alive and busy and, um, lots more to come. Um, I'm gonna let Kurt continue and share some of the other things that, uh, we've been talking about. Thank you.
I'm Kurt Garmchild and I'm the library leader specialist at King Street Primary. Uh, this is my sixteenth year at King Street Primary and my seventeenth year in Danbury. Um, we, a bunch of us got together this afternoon knowing that you were going to come to the board and we wanted to share with you some of the positive things that are happening and maybe some concerns that we have. We have a great staff that cares deeply about students and their learning on the King Street campus. And we work well together. We support one another. We appreciate the things that the board and the administration are doing for us. Recently, we've gotten guided reading materials that has very helped in the classroom program. Uh, we have, we have a very active PTO that has given, um, besides the Omean boards a couple of years ago, have now given iPads to each teacher. And so we're using those in the classroom. They help us a lot integrate technology into our program. This year at King Street Primary, we are seeing a new collaboration between Language Arts and the ELL program that are serving some of our students that are medias. Um, the, the community garden is a great project that we're really looking forward to watching through the spring. Um, we appreciate the teacher computers that we've, uh, gotten this year that have helped us upgrade our program. Our kindergarten teachers are very excited about the new task force that's going to look at, um, the kindergarten program overall and determine if, if what we are doing now is the most appropriate for our kindergarten s- students. And we, I know it's, it's a problem that has come up before. We keep using our support staff to serve as substitute teachers. And that really cuts in on what we are, the kind of support that we are able to get in the classroom for the kids that we need. And, and, you know, I know it's a perennial problem, but it's very felt at the school level. Class sizes in our kindergarten, every one of our five kindergartens is at twenty-three. And we have a number of issues with some of the kindergarten students and when we have a class, particularly kindergarten that large, with no additional support. We're not a Title I school, so we don't have extra hands around. It's become very difficult. Because we've changed curriculums and, and added things to adopt to common course standards. We're, our teachers are doing a lot of crap and putting in a lot of extra hours and the stress level has become pretty evident, um, among our teaching staff. We give the best that we can to support one another and share with one another, but, um, if there, if there were a way to make more prep time available, and one of the possibilities suggested was, um, some duty-free lunches rather than, we generally have three duty, three duty days a week, um, for our staff. That would be greatly appreciated. In general, we love being in Danbury. We love being on the King Street campus and we appreciate all the work that you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If there's no punishment here, you don't have to stay. It's okay. I, I, I know everything you say is such a pain in the world, but. Thank you very much. And next time I want to show the dance. Don't put your ashtrays, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, my God, I'm so sorry. I'm very, very sorry. I have the long glasses on there. And our students, our descendants, you have one. Two?
I'm just going to go to the teacher's corner. I'm now Ace representative, Stephanie. On February twelfth, Ace students attended a presentation called Too Hot for the Price from FCI Women Inmates. The presentation which was held at the Westtown Student Center Theaterium was a very women experience for many. And the women inmates shared their personal stories regarding counterpoor choices landing them in prison and urged our students to take serious consideration regarding their choices. On Thursday, March third, students from Ace along with the West, along with West Penn participated in Dr. Seuss Day at Ellsworth Avenue Elementary School. Students assisted the Westtown students in reading stories of students and acting out role plays from any of Dr. Seuss's famous books. Ace is presently engaging in a project-based learning assignment that is being conducted in our daily advisory class. The project titled Alternative Choices to School Lunch is something that was designed by all Ace teachers during our most recent professional development. As we continue to explore the idea of block scheduling for next year, the incorporation of more project-based learning activities even learning may improve, may prove to be valuable at Ace. On March second, tenth and eleventh graders at Ace participated in the captain SAT testing. Ninety-six percent of tenth graders successfully took the test and ninety-three percent of eleventh graders successfully took the SAT.
Thank you very, very much. And I love it for the good years and the same thing. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you, Stephanie, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Right, they're sneaking out the side door. All right, action items. No, yes, action items. Here we go. I'm sorry, this is, we can go over if, I just didn't go in by because I'm trying to read.
You all good? Part of the, um, activities, we, you have a report in your packet and, um, and last year, when we were looking at our assessment, one of our, our goals was to call down the number of assessments to gain instructional time. We took that very seriously as a small grant that we were able to utilize to help us as we, uh, studied the, um, problem of practice of, uh, the focus of assessment and the number assessment and the use of assessment. Part of our rankings that we talk about at the state, it puts on a list in which the reason why we receive our Lions Grant is simply because, um, we have an achievement gap. So the accountability part of the achievement gap of Dr. Glass puts together a, um, basically I call almost a contract, whatever we're going to do with the money and how we're going to achieve that and we indicated that up to the state and how we're progressing. So when we looked at all of that, we decided that, um, in order to call down some district testing in general, we went through what we call a decision tree where, um, you're utilizing the professionalism of the teacher. And there's, if there's a need for further study, teacher makes that decision. The thing was, what are we going to do so that the teacher has that information and to, uh, to make a decision to move ahead? We chose to start reading assessment for the initial screening of the state. Uh, we do it three times a year, other than for progress monitoring. Progress monitoring is what the state looks at, how we're progressing. And, um, this is what you're going to look at tonight. You're not going to see a standard assessment of saying we're comparing our S-Bac scores to say, it's not about that. It's a growth model. This is a model of looking at formatively what we're doing. But, but it does have for us, it does have a non, non-reference group that is nationally normed. I definitely think it's important. It gives us a target and we look at that target and we know where our students are at that target and how we're moving. So it's not about the death of our growth fields, it's about the United States and where they're at and our kids are projected to do it that. It's a test that is, as I was explaining, it does adjust as the student answers it. It, it will go up or down depending on the difficulty. So it is, it's, it does take, um, some skill level on the part of students, a different type of test, and it is computer-generated. So from that, we were able to go fall and most recent winter, um, assessment. And if you look at the goal, the goal is specific about talking about progress towards, uh, you know, to add more students, moving towards proficiency. Or in our case, I wish to go with the goal if we can do that. So tonight, um, Karen Wans, who does the data for us, and Dr. Glass, who's in charge of the instructional program, will talk about what it is we're doing and what constructs need and what we do. The first thing I'd like to look at is that figure that, um, who said that one? There it is. And what this is, this is our process. I think everything, we have to have a process to go through. This is our first year really of using, utilizing this. We've used other models before, but this is one that we use this year. The principals are developing their, their plans on this. And we have a district data team that's developing our plans on this. So we're modeling what's going on in, in the school and how we use data. We don't want to be over, over, um, generating data, folks. We want to choose the right data and that's been a task for us to do. And that's what this is, that's to do, to ask theoretical questions about what is that we need to know and then drill down the reports about why that's happening and develop what we call a problem of practice or a one problem and then try to figure out what do we need to do to change that behavior? What do we need to support that teacher? And, um, that's what this is about. So if you're looking for comparative, I can say Danbury is the best. I'll just give you that. Our kids are doing well. We do have some stats in here about graduation rates, staff will give you, this is, uh, so that's scores. But this is based on our own work. With that, I'll turn over the bill. You can start and you can get out.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, as most of you know, I usually tend to keep my remarks pretty brief. I will again tonight, but, um, I know you have, uh, all large agenda typically. Thank you, Mrs. Albert. However, tonight's points are probably some of the most important I'll share all year. In front of you, you have a document that looks like this. And it says, Context for Data Review and Analysis, Eight Key Drivers. In a nutshell, these eight items make or break a school system and that's why they're so important. So let me walk you through them briefly. We're really going to look at the peaks of the mountains. You can easily, huge American, you can easily get in-depth data and educational jargon. That's not what this is about. This is really to give you the big ticket items that we look at. The first item there is the written curriculum, taught curriculum, tested curriculum. It's not only curriculum alignment model. And the idea is this, if I were to say, does anyone in the room know everything there is to know about everything? The obvious answer is, of course not. Is there anybody in the room that thinks they can learn everything about everything? That this answer is, of course not. We, as a school system, as every other school system in the country, has to decide what that sacred body of knowledge will be for our children over the course of thirteen years, kindergarten through twelfth grade. It's far too much to teach. You heard Kurt speak to it tonight. Kevin was speaking to it tonight. We have tried to slim and focus our curriculum around those big ticket items. Some of them are non-negotiable. State has adopted a common core, we have to back into that. We have national standards, we have other state standards. We have things that make Danbury unique. I want to talk about Marion Anderson, for example, uh, in Danbury, sure do. Eventually, though, we will come down and create a written curriculum. Now, on the wall over there is the written curriculum guides. We don't use those anymore because it's all visual, electronic, or teachers have it that way. But that represents the body of knowledge and what our kids can master. The second item, and it's, it's so intuitive that frequently it doesn't happen. What we write really should be what we teach. And the best example I can give you is a religious one, we really work hard at separation of church and state. But if you're a Christian and you study the Bible, that becomes the book you learn. Muslim, Quran, um, Judaism, Torah, et cetera, that becomes a sacred body and that's what's taught to those kids and, and the adults as they move through their lives. So our written curriculum really needs to be what we teach kids in and out every single day. Then we get to the tested curriculum. The question is, if I were to give you a test in Chinese right now and say, how are you going to do on this and, and your, your salary is based on whether or not you passed this and you said, I've never been taught Chinese, it's educational, not practice. So we always make sure that whatever we test, whatever we teach, we test. And we typically don't test things we haven't taught. This sometimes gets mixed up, very teaching to the test. No, the test is a warning to our body of knowledge and what we deliver in the classroom. So that curriculum alignment piece is something we look at constantly. You will hear this over and over and over again. Second item, and you heard Sal talk about data wise. It's a wonderful model. It comes out of Harvard. It's, it's a longstanding model. It's very research-based, some of the best educational researchers. Researchers in the country are behind this. We've adopted it as a common language. As Karen goes through, they should hear a lot of things that your veteran board remember before. Research is still research and best practice is still best practice. But the model we use, item number two, comes from medical model. We diagnose, not on that, I'm sorry, but on the, the document we have in front of you. Diagnose, then prescribe, then repeat. If you go to the doctor's office and you say, I have a fever, I'm not feeling well, they put you through an entire litany of diagnostic procedures. And only then do they come up with a prescription. They don't give you every possible medicine on earth. They give you just one particular medicine, so the prescription tends to be very laser-like, very small. If I have a fever, I might take Panadol. If I have an upset stomach, I might take another kind of drug to help, you know, alleviate that problem. If I have a broken arm, I'm not going to give you something to relieve your stomach problem, which you have a splint, for example. So we diagnose and then we come up with an instructional prescription. But it's not one and done. Once we've Once we do that, we continue to look at the data sets, and we ask ourselves the question, Sam and I have this with Kara all the time, how are we doing, how are we doing, how are we doing, how are we doing? So we tried this two months ago, deep beginning bang for the buck, we began returning on our investment. If the answer is yes, let's keep going along this path. If the answer is no, then we look at item number three to make sure that we've really done a good job getting down to the root cause of the problem that we're facing. We use our English language learners, which have been growing exponentially, there are 2,500 of our kids now that are identified as ELL kids. A very low hanging piece of fruit, as they say, would be, well, the ELL kids might struggle because they don't know the English language. They're learning it as they go along. Yes, that's actually true, but it may also be that in their native language, in their native country, they also did not do well in reading and writing enough. So not only are they learning English, but they have a double challenge against them. Unless we dig down to that root cause and see how they do their native language, we might be coming up with a prescription that's misaligned, that we simply set it just one more English word quicker. So we do a lot with the idea of drilling down to the very basic levels of why something is happening. You heard me mention the idea of laser light focus. The prescription becomes very small, and it could be a program. Our program is not aligned to say the Concomore. So we look to see if we need to make programmatic changes. It might be that our program is fine, but our teachers aren't really sure how to do it. And again, you heard folks from King Street tonight talk about the shift. And in mathematics, it's a major shift from the way we learned it as kids to the way our kids are learning it now. And our teachers were never trained to teach it once, it was a conceptual model of now. They were taught a procedural model. And we need to give you a quick example. If we went to the candy mall right now, we teleported there, and we randomly picked 100 people, and we said multiplication of fractions, they would say invert and multiply. And that has been forever. If we look at the same 100 people and said, why? My hunch is 99 plus will say, I have no idea. I would just talk that procedure. Now we're teaching the kids the math, underneath the math. And you hear things like composing and deep composing. What's an 18? I learned it was the number from 17, between 17 and 19. An 18 can also be a 10, a 5 through ones. An 18 can be three fives and three ones. An 18 could be 18 ones, so on and so forth. And our kids pull those things apart, a very different way of teaching. So it might be professional, maybe this schedule, we just don't have enough instructional time a day for getting content there. So we block out things like sacred literacy time, 90 minutes, sacred numeracy or math time for 60 minutes. Those prescriptions that are all aligned to aspects of our educational program. If you look at item number four, and veteran board members will really relate to this quickly, we've had times over the years where our scores have skyrocketed. And the board will look at me and go, wow, this is great practice. Maybe? No, no. It might be a one-year spike, just as we might have a one-year decline. We do have classes of kids, every school system does, that as we watch a particular grade level of youngsters move through, they may be very high achieving just as a group. And other years, we might have a very challenging group of youngsters, and maybe a discipline problem group of kids. And so those one data point pieces are things we don't look at too closely. We look at it, but we really look at trend data, how we do it over the course of five years. If our trend line is growing up, then it might grow up and drop a little bit, and we look a little bit more and drop a little bit, and we look a little bit more. When you look at our CMT data for 10 years straight, over the 10-year period, went up in all 60 areas tested, and that trend line data said we probably didn't do the right thing, and so we continue to do it. So one spike up, one spike down, we notice it, but we're really not that concerned until we see a pattern of it over time. Item number five is so intuitive, but many times this is not done. LAS 7 is looking at student work. So when you look at the numbers tonight, you'll see a whole bunch of numbers. And in the absence of student work, it comes out like this. The scores from the games are 7 to 15, 12 to 43, 19 to 95, 87. And what does that mean? Doesn't mean anything, this is time and context. So if we see our kids are struggling, and today at South City, Kara might mention later, we had a district data team look at mathematics, and we actually talked about looking at students' work to see where they were struggling. Well, they're doing very well here, they're not doing so well here, so we started putting some resources up against it, they're not doing well. And then we, per person, we relook at it over and over time constantly. Number six is also something that is a very important item for us, conceptual item. Our population of kids is our population of kids, and our scores are where they are. If we want our scores to go higher, we don't take our current population of kids to get rid of them, and get all brand new shinier kids. Those are our children. And so the way we help those kids to perform at higher levels, it's not about testing, it's about learning to read in deep levels of fluency and comprehension, thinking mathematics, thinking a lot of sciences, thinking a lot of history, appreciating the arts, et cetera. The way we achieve that is by changing, changes in adult behavior. And so we spend a lot of time talking about what we're currently doing and how we do a better job delivering services to kids. I would certainly concur with Kurt. I was with Gwen, who was here, Gwen, yesterday, before I was up, I said it on data team meetings at King Street. Rich, robust conversations around what are we doing and how do we do a better job teaching? And Kurt's point, we have a wonderful faculty, we do, absolutely concur with that, wonderful leadership, across the board, as Sal said, we have, it's a wonderful school system. But the way we get better is by changing outside of people, but all not trying to figure out we're a better quality child. Fidelity implementation is probably our biggest challenge. I put some numbers down here, so let me unpack them. If you look to the right return without implementation, you have 100 people on staff, and 25% of those people are doing the right thing, the right way, all the time. 25% of your kids will be performing at the desired level, let's just say that's your target. If 50% of your faculty is doing the right thing at the right time and the right way, you would expect a percent of kids achieving, you go up, it doesn't. It still stays at 25%. 75% of faculty doing the right thing, it still stays at 25%. Research strongly suggests it's not until you get to the 90th percentile in terms of percent of teachers and administrators doing the right thing religiously, that you get a dramatic growth, a jumping growth. 11,000 kids, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of teachers, dozens and dozens and dozens of administrators, trying to keep your arms around that is a near impossible task. But that is our hardest challenge right now, to make sure that all of our teachers, all of our administrators, all of central office doing the right thing all the time. And until we get to that 90% level, things really won't change. The last item, and this is particularly troubling to us, and you heard the Shelter Rock folks, we have a lot of things, by the way, in the works that we've been working with, Dr. Illinois and the rest of the team, but there's certainly no surprise, or it is a surprise, there's no secret that our numbers of students are increasing. What is particularly troubling is our poverty level has dramatically increased. Four, five, six, seven years ago, our poverty level was about 32, 33, 34%. That's about total one issue, it's 56%. More than half of our kids live at a below the national poverty level. Why is that important? There's a term called schema, it's educational jargon, I've unpacked it for you. And we talked about kids coming to school with backpacks. Kids from poor backgrounds come with backpacks that don't have much in it because they haven't had the experiences that some of the kids might have. At least myself, an example. Some of you know I came from Bridgeport, I lived in federal housing, we just didn't go on summer vacations because we weren't able to. So my summer was really on the block in a sense. So my backpack has the experiences from that block or a little bit beyond. Modern income family kids might be going to Disney, they might be going to the Jersey Shore, they might go to other places, they might go to the zoo. So their backpack is filled with more experiences. And then very affluent kids have many more opportunities typically to have a richer schema, richer background, instead of experiences, bigger backpack. You'll see this play out, if you hold up a picture and say, what is this? And to a poor kid, they might say, that's a horse. And then to a kid who is a little bit more affluent, has been to a zoo, we'll say, no, it's like a horse, but it's a camel actually. Very similar in many ways, but it's a camel. And the very affluent youngster, who may have traveled excessively, who says, it's a dromedera, it's a camel, it only has to knock. And so the first day of kindergarten, the first minute of kindergarten, the kids who live in poverty come in way behind those kids who come from more affluent backgrounds. The stat we've been talking about this year is only 20% of our kids came to kindergarten this year ready. And so day one, 80% of our kids are behind. But here's Sam, Kara, and myself, and others talking about 10 for 10. 10 months of instruction should give you 10 months of growth, easy metric. We have to look at our teachers, and I think Ellsworth is a good example. In one case, we have 18 months worth of growth in the course of one year. So we have to accelerate for those kids who are way behind, at the same time trying to keep the other kids on track. And at the same time, we have kids who are ahead of the curve, what do we do for them? So it becomes a very, very complex process. The other piece with that is our ELL population, as I mentioned, is about a quarter of the district now. So at Park Avenue School, approximately 50% of our kids are English language learners at that level. And you will hear statistics that it costs twice as much, three times as much to educate an English language learner as it does a non-English language learner. As our population changes, and it's changing dramatically, it's increasing, it's becoming poor, it's becoming more diverse linguistically, demands against the district are increasing. And so the resources that we put up against things like item number three, the prescription becomes maybe a program, might become professional development, might be a schedule, might be Maj or Unis to talk about overcrowding at school, those all play against the available resources that we have. This becomes the context then for all the data numbers that you'll be seeing Kara share with you. And so I'd ask you if you would keep this in the back of your head, of trying to keep that sacred curriculum with fidelity in every classroom, making sure it's aligned to the assessments, providing the resources that we need, digging down to root cause, providing laser-like prescriptions, and making sure ultimately that we as adults become better practitioners so our kids are going to be seeing those improved professional practices.
Okay, good evening. I'll do my best to answer any questions that you have. In addition, if I can, I will go back with Sal and Bill and we'll get back to you. The data wise process is something that we're engaged in right now, and it's caused really rich discussions about student outcomes and student work. What we're going to talk about tonight is what we identify as number three on the arrow, a data overview of the district really. So today, for our district improvement team, which is kind of the IBT team that sits and is really drilling down, we were further into the arrow of, all right, we started with our overview, now how do we really dig into student work and unpack and then, and move into examining instruction? So that's where we are at that level, but I just wanted to kind of give you context for that. Here's our goal, that we are trying to provide data around for all of you. Bill just spoke to some of the contextual framework of looking at the data. For those of you who are new to the board, the STAR assessment is our, this is our first year of administration, so this is really our baseline data. It's the first time teachers are being trained to administer it, it's the first time that kids accept in front of the iPad or the computer to take it. So for years to come, we'll have more longitudinal data, but right now, this is what we have in this present year. Any questions about that? It's a very comprehensive website, you can really research that as well. Is the district, we administer this assessment K9 to every student reading and math beginning at second grade? It's now, it's a norm reference group for the testing. So some folks have questions about DIRF or the state testing. We don't have access to that, but what we do is the national norm reference. So when we look at this, these students and their percentile rank and their growth are being compared to all second graders within that norm reference group. So it's very telling for us, and the first time we've had that information on an ongoing basis. We're administering it three times a year, but we're also using it to monitor progress for individual students. This assessment allows you to take the assessment more often, and it will show the trend line of the student, see if interventions are working. So one of the pieces we're going to talk about is do students meet a benchmark, they're going to be compared to the grade level across the country. We're also going to talk about SGP, that's in some of the charts. I'll get more in-depth to that when we talk about it. But really what it does is it compares apples to apples. If I'm in second grade and I scored a particular scaled score, like a 210, I am only being compared to other second graders who scored a similar score as me. So that way we can measure how fast our students are growing compared to other students that are academic peers. So as you go through those charts, it's a little bit different than the proficiency and benchmarks, so feel free to have me articulate, but that's a little bit different, and it's a really, really helpful piece as Bill talked about whether or not we're getting the right amount of growth for the 10 months of instruction. Also, within the report, are 298 students that are receiving intensive reading intervention for a reading program that's happening in sixth and eighth grade. And then again, as a part of what we're bleeding from a lot of our data overviews is that with respect to academic achievement and outcomes, we all know that English language learners are needing support for increased outcomes. Okay, so if you are not yet a probable reader, you are typically taking an early literacy assessment. It's a different assessment than the reading assessment, so that's why I broke it out this way. The red bar represents the student's achievement in the fall. That's the baseline test, it was, they took that test within just a couple weeks, if not days, of them entering. We wanted a true baseline for the kids. And then it is the red, or I'm sorry, the blue is the early literacy that was taken in the winter. So that's their changes in proficiency levels as we define them. So if students are hitting at least a 40 to 60 percentile rank, that's considered average to the norm reference group. So at or above average, these are the number of students.
If I may, I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
So the fall early is approximately 910, say the 10th of September?
Right.
And then winter early is what, 115 to 1?
It's, it's a, so the fall was pretty much the month of September, depending on what they tested until the 21st. And then we have some makeups. And then that's defined by the State Department of Education for reading and early literacy. And then the winter is the month of January.
All right, and when is the third assessment done?
At the end of April, beginning of May.
Thank you.
So first grade is an interesting kind of gray area when it comes to the assessment piece, because if you are not a probable reader, you are taking early literacy, it has an audio component. If you are able to read a certain amount, they do bump you to the reading assessment. So our end number changes here is the amount of students who are tested. We never want to test a kid just for the state of testing, so we really want to test always at their level. So some kids who started with early literacy in the fall, they scored at a cut, kind of score where they then take the reading in the winter. So they might not be in the same growth, and so they might be bumped for the winter to the next assessment. Okay, so for reading at or above benchmark by grade, the text box there is just a reminder that not all students took the reading assessment in first grade. Some students are still taking early literacy. That end number really did increase from like 14% of students taking reading at first grade in the fall to 55% in the winter. So we have, we're catching a lot more kids with that winter score than we did in the fall. And then we have a broken out by grades for two, three, four, and five, reading and winter fall reading and winter reading.
If I may, I'm sorry. So I know this is going to be establishing our baseline.
Yes.
But is there any baseline, or is there any comparative data as far as state average, national average, or for that matter, DIRF?
They, they don't publish anything. It's a national, what we're using is, are the national norm reference group, the national scores. They're being compared to second graders, the norm reference group nationally.
When you hear that the SAT scores at 1,000 and hits the state, the national average, it's the same thing here, it's the status of norm reference, it's a norm group. That's what I'm saying. This test is not about Deth or Brookfield, it's about how our students progress. This test is not about DHL or Brokefield, it's about how our students progress across the nation, all the states at that level. I think it gives you an honest look at the entire situation. It's not just for city schools, which is the DIRG. These are all kids nationally. And we went and when we researched this, we want to make sure that ELL kids in this implementation on the STAR assessment, that they have a good, strong representation so that we had a fair shot with our kids. And that's why we settled on this particular program. Instead of national average or norm, and we can see how our kids across the country, that ELL, SPED, low SES, low SAS, how they perform so that, you know, it's apples and this is what we're trying to do.
One thing for a state piece though, it does go down to mastery of common core standards and claims. So we are able to look at that piece as something today we did in the district improvement team, which shows as a district, as a school, as a classroom, as a student, where you are with those mastery levels, with the alignment to how they did this particular assessment.
So this, this is, if I understand, any, there you go. This one is going to work, put that up. So this is just from the first assessment to the second assessment.
Correct.
This, this is the growth.
Correct.
But we don't, we don't have any data from last year that compares to this, right?
This is our first year of implementation.
Now, the, the measurement we did last time for at least elementary school was DRA, right?
Right.
So from the DRA to the STAR assessment, was there a big disparity between where a student was in say fifth grade to say sixth grade?
So.
Short answer is yes.
Short answer is when some, it wasn't as highly correlated as we, as, it wasn't highly correlated when we did that.
The STAR assessment, that's a better.
It's computer adaptive.
Assessment.
Based objective.
Than the DRA, right?
The, the DRA is done by a person.
It's more subjective than, than.
It has that, it has that margin of error.
Okay. So in, in cases that we've seen a, a large gap, let's take reading for example, where a student would be reading a fifty-eight grade level based on a DRA, when they get to sixth grade, they take the STAR assessment and they're reading on a third grade level. What, is there something in place in elementary schools, I mean, we're going to do the STAR assessment in elementary?
We are. We are going to be doing, that's the grade one to.
Okay, so this is what we're doing right now.
Yeah. So now what we have the ability to do is track students longitudinally, not just within the school year, but across grade levels. And then we can actually compare grade levels and their growth over time. So it really does allow us to drill down to see where are kids really, was that an outlier? Did they just, you know, kind of tank on this particular test? Or is there a real issue that the student isn't making the progress that we'd like to see? We then have the ability to track them, like put an intervention in, look and track their progress over time and have the teachers set goals for that. So I, teachers are finding that a helpful tool to do that. So that with the SRBI process, we can really track with the norm reference data.
So this is the baseline, so next year we can say, hey, we went from this where, this, there's, keep showing improvement based on one year to another.
Yes, and also, you know, it's, when we say baseline, it's because it's just so new for implementation, like for the teachers and the students, you know? The fall baseline, we're going to see growth from, we'll still be able to, to lean certain things from the outcomes from this year for sure.
So in theory, we'll be able to catch that disparity from elementary to, you know, schools with not that big gap going into, you know, I mean, in theory.
Yeah, that would be a part of, that's some of the pieces that we talked today about vertical alignment. What are we seeing from fifth to sixth grade? That's something we're investigating and looking very closely at. And then this is, using this data overview, drilling down the student work and looking at the progression of learning. You're welcome. Thank you, Will Nelson. Any questions? Okay, yours more, I'm sure you can certainly have. So for six, seventh, eighth, and ninth, this is how we did it. What I'd like to just point out is that for ninth grade, that includes both DHS and ACE. ACE is actually testing all of their students so that we can monitor growth. For math, it's a, it's a similar, it's a similar setup, just different colors. Grade one is a very small population of students, especially in the fall. So we piloted this at grade one and with South Street and Hayestown, which are identified on there. But if a student is not a probable reader, they're typically not taking this assessment. So they're still taking early literacy. Early literacy actually has some numeracy components as well that the teacher is able to, to use for instructional purposes. But the real piece is that students aren't typically ready to take this assessment, you know, as a cohort of kids till second grade. Okay? So it's the same layout and with the percentages of proficiency at the top. I should mention that STAR is obviously aligned to Common Core state standards, or we wouldn't be doing this. It also has a predictor of how students would do on SBAK. So depending on what their cut score is currently, they would say, you might expect if they do a similar performance on SBAK as they did to this task, you know, what their performance might be. So this is what I was talking about with the median SGP fall to winter with the reading scores. So if I, if I were to take fourth grade for example, what we talked about before is I'm only being compared to my academic peers who scored similar level to me. So if you have a super high fire who's very high achieving, their, their growth is not compared to kids who are two grade levels below. Their growth is compared to other students who have a similar high achieving score. Okay? And that is a norm reference group as well, so that's a national piece. So if I'm a fourth grader and I'm scoring maybe a grade level below, I'm being compared that way nationally. Okay? So the piece is, what we really want to see with an average being forty to sixty, when I looked at this, I said, we want to at least have a forty SGP. We at least want our kids growing more than forty percent of their academic peers, right? To put them in the average zone. When you're looking at a median, you want to look at more of like the fifty mark, right? So individually for a student, we want them to at least hit the basement of the forty, but when you're looking at a median, fifty percent of kids on either side, you'd like to see the growth around the fifty. Okay? But for our first implementation, we were seeing, and teaching teachers had to run these reports to say, who's really met that, that growth expectation? So then they get it broken out in their class to say, these students did, and then STAR's the students who didn't. So to the question before, that would be the perfect place. If you're not meeting the baseline of growth that's expected, that would be a red flag to the teacher.
But if I could.
Yes.
How do you explain the disparity between ACE and DHS?
Well, a student at ACE, you know, simply a mean student, they have all of the backpack issues that, you know, Bill was talking about, and focus on attendance, you know, gaps in their work. That's why it's separate.
But is, aren't ACE students predominantly come up through the Danbury system?
Generally.
So that's.
Well, that's what I'm saying. There are other things that are characteristic of learning that a test is not going to assess. Their ability to focus, their attitude of taking a test, or, you know, the pride of finishing it well, you know, blowing through a test. There are a number of reasons why. The key for us, and I'll say here, that, you know, we keep focusing on ACE. ACE is now a focus school looking at, turn it on school, I'm sorry, that we need to look at how we can better deal with the population of tenants and focus. So I mean, that's what you're doing there. And that's why the best is to be broken out so that you can see the high school, ninth grade, and percent ACE, and not put them together and, and, you know, hide the fact of what's happening in ACE. I think you understand why. There are a lot of factors that go into that. We will sit there with Sandy now, and she'll look, and we'll take the less numbers there to drill down, and talk about the young student, how to make connections. And is this the best assessment for it? That's the other question. Is there a different assessment for students that have headaches? This is our first shot at doing it this way and having an exposure. So that's where you see the difference.
And then we have the same for the math, median SGP also. This is the benchmark summary. Sal wanted to be sure that you saw some of the subgroups. Not really. Sorry. They have it in, yeah, and you have it electronically.
You all can't see it.
Sorry.
I can't see it.
So one of the pieces that, this is just kind of a summary. It's really the same information, but just grouped together. So the, the K five that we looked at for early literacy, it's typically administered K two at the most, but those students were at or above forty percent, forty-eight percent for the STAR reading and fifty-five percent in math, K five. So for STAR reading, it's also broken out for you for six-eight, which for you guys is thirty-nine percent. Grade nine is thirty-seven percent. The six-eight total for math was forty-four and the grade nine total forty-nine. It can break down three subgroups as well as ELL and grade reduced slants.
Could you, do you have the ability to drill it down for school?
I do, yeah. And, and we've done that with the principals and that's very helpful to look at and really start looking at it recently.
So I'm looking at this, this list here, so basically what it's saying is, where is the percentage at or above that part so that? That means that's, that's, so that's the forty percent, so these are the percentages that, of kids that are at the benchmark. So there's forty, sixty percent or not.
So this was the fall assessment and then, you know, what we were talking about before with ELL, we're, we're really looking at that, that number with supports in elementary school and what does it look like at each school. The winter, that is on the next, down the next sheet. What it's important to see, why I wanted to include the numbers of the students who are assessed, because sometimes that can really skew how something looks. So I, it was too much on one sheet for you, so I apologize.
Can just me on third, the terminology of benchmark is determined by the, the terminology of the benchmark is determined by a national computation of all these scores and then Danbury measured against that?
We, we measure against the percentile for that piece. So you set a district benchmark of the bottom of what you would like to book these students. Some states choose the number, Connecticut hasn't done that yet, but we went on, you know, STAR recommendations first year, what other states are doing, but they are compared nationally to those grade levels, yes.
So again, I'm clear, sorry.
So it's not like a benchmark where we would say, can the students do all the tasks, right? It's more that how do you rank according to peers who are in your same grade level? So if you are performing at least forty percent or more than your, than your peers in your same grade level, that puts you at an average proficiency.
Agreed. Peers, peers be.
Grade level.
Or grade level be defined within the state of Connecticut or nationally in the US.
Nationally, yeah.
And that recommendation was given by statisticians from STAR, versus how do we set? We didn't receive any mistake recommended, so we went with the DIRG.
Okay, I was sure of the confirmation, how the benchmark was determined.
When we look at real mastery of benchmarks related to Common Core, that's another piece that, that we bring in, but it's extensive to look at. Okay? Are you good? Then, do you have something you want to add?
Just to Ralph's, Ralph's point, you know, looking at the other side.
Yep.
It's horrible.
It's frightening.
It's horrible.
So this is really, one of the first windows we've had to our reference data for all of our students on an ongoing basis. So having.
If I, if I could, I'm sorry.
Sure.
It, it's really not horrible because there's really true no comparison that we're looking right now at a baseline. So we don't know what other DIRGs within, within.
What we're saying is just for Danbury, you know, we're just saying.
I'm saying, what I'm saying is just compared to the national.
Yeah.
National average, right? National benchmark, we come in percentile, we come at forty-six percent of our kids.
But the national percentile doesn't have forty-five percent span of population, don't, they don't have thirty-eight percent ELL students.
Well, some do.
So I, I'd rather see, I'd rather see comparison data, I'd rather see comparison data as far as true representation of where we stand versus a similar district, whether it be a DIRG or whether it be, you know, this, this is setting the baseline.
Danbury is only district in the.
No.
We don't know, we don't know.
We do.
The samples on.
Maybe Bridgeport's numbers are fifteen.
The samples on DIRG would be relative to that one district. What I tried to say, and maybe I didn't make it clear, so we tried it now. We sat down for hours to disaggregate information of ELL's special ed, making sure that the, the number, the end that was represented in their study would be representative of Danbury. Bethel is not, but the DIRG in Connecticut would be similar to ours. What, what the organization has done is take it nationally and take it all of the DIRGs and areas that are similar to ours and have put aggregate these of the ones together. So what I said before is that it's not comparing DIRG, it's going beyond that. It's giving you as a board and as an administration, saying if a student's score is here, then we know whether we're sitting in Iowa, Iowa City, or we're sitting in, you know, northern Connecticut, you know, this is how they should be succeeding. And if they're really sharp and doing well, I would ask, what are you doing with a kid that's succeeding? Are you spending your time with everybody down here? This was a forty misinformation saying, is everybody growing? That's why I said to, we set the goal and saying, our kids grow, you know? And then that's, that's the challenge that we have had here, to find the right data that would be representative of what we did, and that's why we chose that. All we had in the past was, you know, we look at the DIRGs and say, we're, like Bill said, we're two, one and a half or two above almost next year. That's fine, but we didn't know how the kids are actually moving along that continuum. This is why this is helpful for us, very, very much so, you know, and by creating those ones. And it is our first year, but it's first year of saying, okay, Danbury, measure yourself against all the kids that have taken this for the past how many years? Number of years. This is our first year. That's all it means. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't mean that they're compared from each other only, it's over time.
So if we have fidelity in the curriculum, we should see next year, we have fidelity this year, we should see a growth in next year. And as the fidelity becomes higher and higher in the curriculum by the teachers, teaching them, we should be able to see growth in all the areas.
So one of.
Is that so?
That's our hope.
Yes. And so.
In theory.
So one of the pieces that you'll see is, so in comparative to previous match scores that you all have seen, is that with the kids who've had Core per a certain number of years, they have a higher.
Understanding.
Yeah, percentage of proficiency or metrics, yeah. So one of the pieces that Sal asked me to do was pull out, so I don't miss him.
So are you saying that the, the data making up the population that we're measuring against is the same demographics as.
It has a representative.
The body of students. So again, for simplicity on my mind, you would, you would pretty much exclude communities perhaps in the order of county, I mean, just to make a.
No, no. What you want to do is have an inclusive.
But it's not like, it's not like saying the average income from Fairchild Sound County is X number of dollars and you've got David Letterman who makes more than certainly, you know, I do.
Yeah, yes, it does, but the thing of it is, if I would say, just put into the groups, only my L's and only kids that have certain SES, then, you know, what am I comparing my kids to? I, I think that the beauty of, of what they did was they put all of these youngsters in that. So if you couldn't compete, if I'm sitting in Westport and I'm hitting this score, sixty or seven, and I'm sitting here and I'm hitting this score, I'm competing against that, that youngster and I'm seeing how we're growing. I mean, when you take an AP exam at the, at the high school, that's what it does. They don't care about your SES. So you take that test and it's comparing at that level. This thing here actually makes the adjustments. So you can say, are they moving?
And then the cut scores.
And that's important to know.
The cut scores and the other pieces around what are grade level expectations aligned to Common Core state standards, right? So that's what we want to know, if students are able to conform the, the standards and claims that we're teaching, you know? So, so it becomes as we like kind of all align to, to the standards, we all need to have a similar assessment to do that. And there are other assessments besides STAR. And there are other assessments besides STAR. But research was done by, um, the Director of Reading as well as, um, PES, Sal Center and the language of, you know, how, what does this look like for our kids? And they did the research, they went through all the research papers and, and all of that. Yes.
So what, what do we hope to gain from this report here?
So this is a data overview. And as we talked before, in moving through the district improvement process, it's being done at the central office level as well as the building level and then the grade level or department level. Everyone is getting professional development of how to take something like this and then drill down into student core and come up with what our problems of practice are, right? So identifying what our kids can't do, what are they not able to perform? And then with the problem of practice, what are we doing as adults? Or not doing to, to move them to the next place? So once we establish that, an action plan is created, whether it be at the building level, grade level, classroom level or central office level, to, to move forwards, do whatever it is, PD, resources, curricular changes, whatever it is that comes out of the investigation, and then monitor for improvement. If we're not making gains, then we go back and we say, did you pick the right thing? Did you identify the right problem, right? So that's what's happening now. Those are really rich discussions that are happening kind of at every level. Um, but there is, there is actual pieces in mind.
So to, so to what Richard said before, that this is more of a baseline and we're looking for year-over-year.
Yeah.
Improvement based upon, we're going to use this as our first baseline and, and not to look at these numbers to say.
Correct. What has been eye-opening for our teachers more than anything else and principals is that they can see for the first time, did kids meet growth targets that are nationally refer, you know, who are referenced? And that's huge. Because if they're not, well, what's happened, right? And, and so then they're able to put interventions and supports into place through teaching, you know, go back and, and identify for those students.
What is that tar, I mean, is there a percent, percentile target for growth that we're actually looking for?
Yes, we at least want to see a forty, a forty SGP.
Okay. And then next year, we're expecting to see?
Well, it's always, it's in time. So when we test them at the fall, they're being tested, what is expected for fall fourth graders? Winter for fourth grade.
Right, but we're going to compare.
We will compare.
All, all year-over-year and, okay.
But what, what you do for the SGP is like, between those benchmark assessments, you always want to see at least a forty.
Okay.
Yeah. For a median, we, we want to project for fifty. Did you have something?
I don't know.
Okay. Okay. So one thing Sal asked me to do is to go through and then pull out the kids who have been with us for at least three years and then do a comparison. So if you look at the red, orange, red on the top is students who are below the benchmark that we set. And then, um, orange is students who are at or above. In the bottom is the fall/winter for students that we did as a cohort. So the students expected to grade where kindergarteners who are sitting with us. Okay? And then, um, blue is below and green is at or above. So I did this by grade level for, for your, yeah.
That's so we can observe closer our program group in areas that we may need to look at differently. That's why we just, that's why we create these cohort groups. We study them over time, run it years in school, which is helpful to us.
Here's the question from, from perspective as far as looking across. I know you said you can use the data to look at elementary schools. I don't know, does this work?
Should work.
You know, whatever.
You, you can look at different data based on elementary schools. Can you, it looks like there's drop-offs between each change in school, like from fifth to sixth grade.
Right.
Is not an improvement at eighth, ninth grade is not an improvement. Um, and also significant drop where you're ninth grade. Is it also, can we tell from that what students are prepared, say in sixth grade, from where they're coming?
That was exactly our discussion today in the district improvement team. Because with having this data overview for the first time, that's obviously where we let our money the most time at this point. Um, and not just at sixth grade, but now going back into fifth and fourth, that what foundational skills or strategies do those students need to be able to perform that at sixth grade? What's our vertical alignment? So we had every player at the table today flipping down and drilling down for that purpose. Um, different expectations, it's a big jump from fifth to sixth and, and changes in standards for alignment. So, um, what we're looking at is how we're transitioning these students that all of a sudden in fifth grade, we're using picture support, visual, you know, sports. And then in sixth grade, they're, they're not getting that all of a sudden. So there's kind of that drop-off. So we're, we're just investigating that now. That's, that's the biggest, we're seeing as like our highest leverage issue to go left, yeah. Yeah. Thanks.
And we're still not losing focus on the, as we talked about, in the last couple of years, the individual measurement of the student's performance, knowing that I cannot achieve a certain success level of improvement relative to Dr. Glass or.
Right, that's why.
Et cetera. Which thing is more important than comparing me to somebody in Arizona or somewhere?
So, um, the student growth percentile or SGP, that piece is comparing that student to an academic here. So if I'm a sixth grader and I'm reading at a second grader level, my growth is only compared to other sixth graders who's reading at, who are reading at a second grade level. It's not compared to Dr. Glass who's reading at a twelfth grade.
Oh, so you have a plane field on.
In levels of.
I guess.
That's why you can look at growth in a way that we never had before.
Right. Twenty seconds. Thank you.
Yeah.
Karen, thanks.
Yes.
I think it's important for the board to know too, that this is the deepest level of diagnosis that we've been able to do. Because one of the beauties of what the district is able to do at this point in time is we can actually not just look at a class. I look at school, not the grade level of the class. We can actually pinpoint every single student in that class and where they fall in the cluster by scattered around.
Right.
And then we talk to the principals and Mrs. Gallagher's here. So we would turn around and say, okay, so tell us Ralph's story because we see he's an outlier or maybe he's right in the middle. Why are those four kids right here versus some other place? Second thing, and Holly really hit on a key point for us. Sue's here from King Street, England, and, and other folks who have been at the elementary level um, for years. And the question is, how many times over ten years have fifth grade teachers who were teaching math and everything else sat with sixth grade math teachers? And it's pretty much zero because of the different schedules that we have, early schools, late schools, different times with middle and elementary schools. So we're really relegated to just those four VP days. And today we've talked to the elementary math department head and the middle school math department head. And we talked about creating a way for the sixth grade teachers to actually come into the fifth grade classes and observe fifth grade teachers teaching in the Common Core and sexually raise the math. And they're very excited about it because it's something we haven't done. Very rich conversation. The other piece I just want to share with you at your leisure, on pages eleven and twelve, I think it is. We talked about the challenges against the district ELL and free reduced slouch. And so I always look at those populations and see, are they moving? And many of you have referenced, I didn't know before on that, the eight key drivers, trend data and statistical significance. Right now, we don't know what we don't know. This just happens to be our first shot. So it's like throwing something at the wall and it hits. And we say, what does that mean? We don't know yet. If we throw something next year at it and it hits very closely, then we know we're still pretty much staying flat. It goes up and suddenly we know we're making growth on that over three, four, or five years and continues to grow and grow up, then we know we're starting to close the gap. But we can also do that in real time. And that's where those data conversations that Karen was talking about before become so critically important because it's, why are our kids doing what they're doing? What do we have to do as adults differently to get more mileage from the kids? Because the challenges they bring with them are the challenges they bring in the Common Core. We have to do things differently to beat those gates.
The addition, when we're looking at the piece, especially looking at the fifth to sixth grade component and things like that, the contextual piece of who are those students becomes super important. And as Bill was saying, um, you know, and their exposure to what their, um, their exposure to the Common Core, right? So our kids who, when you look at the kind of the, uh, benchmark levels for students who are on like third grade math this year and fourth grade, it's much higher. They've had just Common Core almost integrated, right? So that's the, only the way that they learn. Some folks, you know, that are later got Common Core when they were in fourth grade, you know? Um, and then, or sixth grade, right? So that's the other piece. Um, so it's broken out by grade levels for you for reading and for math. And in the interest of. Okay. Um, so for example, you know, for our winter grade three, sixty-five percent of kids are meeting the benchmark. That's a much different number, right? And we're saying those kids are really much more adept at using strategies that are aligned to the assessment. And then, um, Joey? Okay. So you can, um, and certainly follow up with any questions you have asked for. Um, the read one eighty grizzle, I wanted to include those. Um, is, have you presented about that?
No, we just talked about doing the last year's conference. We haven't talked about.
Okay. So read one eighty is a reading intervention program that was put into sixth and ninth grade for identified students who were typically two years or below in their reading level. Okay? So putting in this intervention is, it's their reading instruction. It's their class that they go to. Um, it's, uh, it's small group instruction. It's, um, teacher instruction, you know, whole group. It's, um, computer time and those types of things. It's really individual to the student. Um, we have, I said, I think I said, but in sixth and ninth grade, I think in ninth grade, there's five classes. All the rest are at the middle school level. Um, for the analysis that, that you'll see on the next page, two hundred and ninety of the kids' records, we can use where the data announced as a piece. So this is based on that. Um, for those kids who received this reading intervention, this was a big rollout this year. There's a lot of professional development that went into this um, to help teachers come around and, and how do you even do it? It's the first time. Um, seventy-three percent improved their lexile, their reading level. Um, fifty-eight percent of students exceeded their annual growth target in only one semester. Okay? So that looks at comparing, well, Miss Jean Alley said before about, um, you know, does it compare the right kids? That's comparing kids to similar achievement level as well. So they get a growth target based on the reading level they come in in the fall. And so fifty-eight percent of those kids have already reached their year's worth of growth, which is great. Um, thirty-eight percent of the kids met two times their annual growth target with the intervention. And thirty-four percent improved this performance level, uh, which is a pretty big band of, um, you know, basic, below basic or proficient and above. Um, so we're just keeping an eye on that. That's something we're monitoring. We are really pleased with, with these numbers at this point. Um, these students have grown tremendously. These are typically students who are level at least two grade levels. So they did not make typical growth in general, or else they wouldn't be below two grades. So to see them exceeding annual growth targets already by the January assessment was, was really fantastic growth.
Put that up against a ten for ten and the idea of acceleration, that's why it's so encouraging.
So for the thirty-eight percent of the kids just got, you know, like six for, or twenty for six. Yeah, it's been, it's been a, the rank for that, it's coming up at the time of that.
This, uh, process worked corollary to, considering the assessment piece last year. We made groups go out and visit different systems similar to ours. And that's the challenge for us to go out and see some systems that have programs. And we walked away with some assessment, which is at STAR. And then this intervention model to best deal with our students that are, have not been making our growth targets. So it's been really remarkable, the work the teachers have done. Because we can give whatever program we want. It's their implementation, but it really makes the difference.
And the student's determination. Right. That's a big piece for, for kids who typically struggled in reading to, to have determination for to be their growth target in states. Um, the other piece is graduation rates. It's very hard to see on this screen. I don't know why it's making it so small here, but you do have it in your packet. Um, these are the current four-year cohorted data. So, um, the five-year obviously hasn't been released because we're not finished with that fifth year for those students. Um, I, I did the, uh, the line graph with it so that you can see we typically have very similar trends. It might go up or down in particular areas, but in general, we have the same movement with our subgroups. So the graduation rate, again, this is cohorted, this is not all students. This is, you started with me in ninth grade, right? And you're going to end with me in twelve, right? Not kids who move in and out and all that to be six. It's really looking at a very specific population. Yes.
What is the national average?
Um, typically, okay, I don't have the national average, but typically the state is around eighty-seven. Um, this is our district, obviously A's and G's are different. Um, let me just, let me start with my, my page. Um, CHS was at seventy-nine point five percent. So they were a little bit higher, yep. And A's, the four-year cohorted graduation is really difficult to determine because of the movement of the kids. Um, so it's a very, very small, um, population, um, that stayed there for them four years, I guess. Um, it's obviously broken down into subgroups. Um, the blank spots mean that during that year, they did not record the information like that. So if there's a drop-off on the trend line, that's fine. Okay? Any questions?
A question for Dr. Glass. Just to take you. Going back to your first page, eight key drivers. I think number seven, you think ninety percent of all teens is an administrative doing the right thing, right, to equal the growth. How do you, you, you gentlemen as administrators, measure that ninety percent? I mean, that ninety percent, I'm assuming you got nine hundred, a population of nine hundred people that you're dealing with, plus or minus, and to hit ninety percent of doing the correct thing to, to give us a growth? I mean, how do you? It's hard for me to fathom how you measure that or how you, how you understand. If you're not doing it, if it's sixty percent, does that mean we're not hitting growth? I, I guess I'm just saying, to me, it seems like an administrative nightmare to calculate something like that.
The fidelity implementation is, 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 is not unique to Danbury. You know, it's, and I think the literature says you have a school system or system of schools. You know, does everybody do their own thing or they're going to do the system now? You try to allow some individuality based on answers at, at school. Uh, but we have a challenge and there is no question. We, we currently, Bill knows, and we're looking at the reading program. We know it's a good strong program. We've not seen exactly what's the results we want. We believe it's fidelity implementation. Uh, we have coaches that go in and view, we have teachers, we have administrators that view things with instructional rounds. So we have not only, you know, the edict of, hey, you must do this, but there is a way of monitoring it and that's the visits to the classroom. I think the new T-valle model, um, uh, it tolerates, there is a place for student data in my, in an assessment, but it should not be slow key, slow key. And as was common before, there are other things. But when you look at assessments and you see deviations among and between different builders, you start asking critical questions. What is going on in Bill's building, not its household? Why is it? And then, you know, it turns out to be fidelity implementation. I mean, and maybe a particular group within this. So that's how we have to deck it. That's, there's kind of multi-faceted way of doing it. We've asked some outside constipation this year to come in and look at us and say, what do you see with us? And we chose a number of schools for them to come and look at. So I think you try to pitch arms around that in terms of fidelity because it is important if you're going to put this much money inside there. And we do. It's important for people to, 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 and I, uh, Bob Dabasek, who's not here, when he heard this, it was blown away. The teacher said, what do you mean? You're telling someone why you're doing something they're not doing? Doesn't, doesn't register. This is not that simple, really. Things happen. People aren't prepared professionally enough to do it. You have substitutes in there, so you got to drill down. But it's a constant vigil and effort to know what, what is it we're looking for? And, you know, are they doing it at the level that? And, you know, are they doing it at the level that is going to make it give us the results that we want?
But it seems like you're working, not that you're intentionally working against yourself, in that as a result of lack of financial resources that, that we have or had in the past, and just as we've heard tonight from parents concerned about the, the overs, uh, schools, et cetera, that also hinders your, I suspect, ability to, to hit this ninety percent mark. Not, not with any fault of the teacher, just because of the complexities of, of what they're, they're dealing with. So it's, it's.
Can I? I don't, you know, this was constantly returned. I don't see people going rogue guns. And I absolutely agree with what Sal said, you know, we have a system of schools, or school system, or school system. And so we put something out, there is an expectation that the district will follow this. We try to be as, go back to what Sal said earlier, we looked at, and Karen, we looked at STAR. We also looked at something called MAPS from NWA. We had the news came in, we talked about the school system. We do our due diligence before we select something. But once it's selected, then it's, that's our model. We put it in place and we monitor it very closely. I sat in with three math coaches in one classroom, and it took three of them working in small groups with a low children group of kids, kids in the middle, and a high children group of kids, while the teacher was watching, station to station to station. And then at the end, they deep griefed, and the teacher said, I have to tell you, this is the first time I've ever come around this strategy. Now I understand what we're talking about. And that teacher is considered to be a good, strong teacher, working very hard, good planning, and yet wasn't getting, there was fidelity implementation in terms of effort. It just wasn't being implemented correctly to the depth that it needed to be. So this is a massive, massive undertaking. And as, you know, we mentioned in the very beginning, this is our number one challenge in the district. But it's, I don't want to give you the misimpression that we have a bunch of people say, I'm not doing it. They're saying, we do our best to do it. We don't know how to do it in some cases, we don't have enough time to do it in some cases, we don't have the resources to do it in some cases. So train us, give us more resources, space does become an issue. The, the instructional conversation is always the most complex of all conversations because of the myriad issues that are competing against us. And when you take this in that last bullet, it compounds exponentially. When poverty goes way up, and our ELLs go way up, then what a teacher could do a couple of years ago, because they knew it, now they have to differentiate in real time in the classroom, something called the SRBI process. And it sounds like, oh, it's pretty easy. It's brutally hard, just a huge challenge for us. With that said, each year that border of the day sets, there should be a trend line over time. Like we believe it should be going up the way it did with our CMTs, for example. Because people get smarter, they come around and.
Yeah, my comment, just to make it clear, wasn't a derogatory comment indicating that staff wasn't willing to do it. It's just that they're trying to do something that they have so many obstacles against. But I, I think your explanation relative of the coaching helps clarify the implication to, to us to, to at least try to get to the ninety percent, so it's a lot clearer, thanks.
Okay, but just to get back to the, the graduation rate, this second graph is still enrolled students, so these are our students who are still matriculated in, in the school, either at ACE or in high, or in Denver High School. Those students would be hopefully graduating within our five-year cohort, right? So these are kids that are still enrolled. You've seen that, um, kind of go up over the last, you know, certain number of years. We had a dip in two thousand and fourteen, and then we're at twenty-eight, um, twenty-eight, twenty-three percent of our ELL students, right? Does the, no, that was for.
We've asked the state to be cognizant and give credit to the districts who are willing to keep students in and not pushing out. We're dealt that, and we have students come in. You heard Gary, the county talked to you, and Bill mentioned, forget the acronym, but students said that serious interruption in their education, they meant had not been in school. So they've just been in the first year, just orientated themselves of schooling. So that takes them that much time to assimilate and get their, and then start getting along with their credits. And to our credit, we've kept these youngsters in the program. We think that Dan Berilla, David, worked for that. And instead of pushing them out, we're dealt that, but you, you don't see that in this number.
I do have, so our other not enrolled, these would be considered according to state, are dropout numbers. So the district other was at twelve point six percent last year. We were looking at like eleven point six, eleven, uh, the previous years. What I did go back and look at, of the students who did leave last year, how many of them enrolled in our adult education, either credit program or the GED course? That was twenty-two percent of students who left school went to our adult ed program. So that was, that was relatively high. So what I did, um, just because it's a lot of information to take in, I provided a reference for you on the last page of what those graduation rate calculations in terms mean, just so you can get, get in a lot.
Everyone can read it, thank you.
Yes, any other question?
What times the case?
I know.
Yeah, I want my cheese.
I mean, I'm not, this data doesn't really mean anything. It doesn't mean much to me, especially since, you know, we're just rolling it out.
Yeah.
I, I know it can, we feel a little pessimistic about some of the numbers, you know, but I would rather have accurate, you know, negative data than inaccurate positive data. So I don't have a problem with that. But, you know, considering we just started rolling this out, are there any second thoughts about this, this type of testing compared to the other types of testing that you reviewed before making, saying you go with this?
So our review was, what really affects most people, most districts are using that assessment or STAR. We were, um, this was also prompted by the State Department of Education. They, they would not accept the GRA as our K-three literacy assessment anymore. So we had to put something on the list. We wanted something comprehensive that could also include math that was appropriate for English language learners with an audio component and things like that, and had our strong early literacy.